Warm a couple of days.
Yeah, it's way to go back up to sixties.
I got no problem with that. Well, 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 again, you know, I don't wanna, you know, it should be, but it has snowed in March before. And it has snowed in April.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
You know, what's on the agenda? Do we get an agenda?
Yeah, um, well, the first thing I guess is about Lawson, which I'm, I am, it's about a, getting, the board's getting sued. Part of Thanet, so, um. So I guess you have to vote on that, but I'm recused, so.
Oh.
And then after that, it's back to, uh.
Is it, was it about our decision that it's an informality of the master plan?
I, I, you know, I didn't, I did not read it that carefully. I saw recused. I saw what it was and said, ah.
Yeah, don't have to worry about it. See, I agree that I should have looked at it at least. Just figured that today we were gonna be just talking about.
Jerry, did you see my email? We'll see.
I have never seen.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I gotta say.
You know, that's, I kinda showed you something I had before, and, you know, at the time, no, you didn't, you didn't get applied.
Was that, okay.
That was part of it. That was, that was directly out of the, out of the township ordinance. But I, I, you need to do that.
Different from this section? Right, 'cause the section, the first city is standing.
Yeah, 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 but, yeah, but that's another thing.
I'll go back and look at that, see.
Yeah, and, 'cause the other thing I wanted to say, that just popped out of my mind. 'Cause I, you know, I, there's been nothing, I know that it's, our council makes a decision whether they accept it. I just wonder, well, okay, what'd you guys make a decision on? Or did they do something like kick it back to, say, go to Derek and say, Derek, what do you, what do you know?
I don't know, yeah, I don't know, but, you know, I mean, Bruce Afrin can make the point that, you know, one of the things we're supposed to look at is the affordable housing sector. And in these circumstances, where the final affordable housing plan is handled by the council, who gets it? It just seems to me we're kind of working like you are.
Well, like I said, I could, I got some stuff. I could show you some stuff, but I don't, if you have to talk to the council, that's, that's fine. I mean, I could show you. I mean, there's all that stuff that's kind of, it's laid out, and.
Do you want to send this?
Um, I could, I could, I could do it.
However, whatever you're specifying.
Um, I could do that.
Okay, if that's all right.
Okay, no, that's not a problem at all.
Good, then I'll thank you.
Good evening.
No, no man to me.
First of all, can you hear me? Do you all have your microphones turned on? Sorry? All right, this is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, March 5th, 2020. And the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given prominently, by prominently posting the 2020 Agenda Resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of December 2019. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 2019 edition of the Princeton Packet. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli, Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Oakman.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Ms. Sacks. Ms., Mr. Tefzarni.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Gunning.
Here.
Ms. Spala. Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Under announcements, we have, on the 18th of this month, a master plan committee meeting at 9:30 a.m. in Meeting Room A. Would you like to say anything more about that?
Thank you. There is not much more of an update from the last time, but not necessarily everybody was here. We are working, the master plan committee is working to finalize a draft green building and sustainability element of the Princeton Community Master Plan. So, um, we are hoping that the meeting on the 18th, um, we can agree on a draft to forward and recommend to the full board. But that remains to be seen. We're still working on it. Thank you.
All right, now, the next thing we have are minutes. This is from the special meeting of June 13th, 2019.
Excuse me, Mrs. Gunning, I received some minor changes, a couple grammaticals, some spelling changes from Ms. Wilson, and that will be included in the adopted findings, uh, I'm sorry, minutes.
Okay. Any emendations, comments, anybody? If not, do I hear a motion to adopt these as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. The next thing is the hearing, which is the Landwin application. It's.
The resolution.
Okay, no, I didn't. Sorry. This is a professional services agreement. It's 375 Terre Haute LLC versus the municipality of Princeton and the mayor and council of Princeton, Princeton Planning Board, 10 and 101 Thanet Circle LLC, Avalon Bay Communities Incorporated. Um, any, you all have a copy of this? Any comments? Anyone? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it has been moved in second. Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
And for the record, I'm recused.
All right. Thank you, Alvin. Hearing tonight is Landwin Development Corporation, continued from January 23rd of this year. It's a preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan with variances. And it is for 725, 822, Hereington Road, 915 Mount Lucas. This is, that is block 1001, lots 1214. And the deadline for action is, has been extended to the March 6th of this year. So, without any further ado.
Ms. Gunning?
Yes.
Before we begin, I just want to certify. I, I am recently appointed to the board, so I missed the first six meetings on this. However, I have reviewed all the transcripts that were given to me, as well as reviewed the videos. So I feel I'm up to, up to speed on, on most of it. Okay.
Yeah, given that, the board members qualified, Owen, if you filled out a.
Yes, I have.
An acknowledgement of it.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Tom Letizia, attorney, Pepper Hamilton, representing the applicant, Landwin Development. I believe this is hearing number eight of this application. And, as you know, I was present at the last meeting in, in January, but it's my understanding that Mr. Afrin began his case with his expert in forestry management, Mr. Farr. I do not know if Mr. Farr completed his testimony, so I guess that's the first question, is whether we're continuing with Mr. Farr or whether we're now moving on to another expert.
I'm sorry. For the record, I'm Bruce Afrin, counsel for the objectors. Uh, Mr. Farr is in his seat, so he is ready to continue. Uh, I have one or two supplemental questions for him, and I don't know, Ms. Gunning, if the board wants to ask any questions it has of each witness one at a time, or if we would prefer to save that till all the objectors' witnesses are completed. But he's available either way.
I think we, I think we would prefer to save it until the rest of the objectors' witnesses have been heard.
Thank you. So just to let the board know what our plan is for tonight, I have one or two very brief questions for Mr. Farr. Then Lincoln Hollister will speak to certain geological issues relating to hydrology on the Princeton Ridge. And then our biology expert, Blaine Rothhauser, will make his presentation. We, in addition, have Mr. Smith, who is our engineer, and Mr. Rodriguez, our planner. I doubt very much we'll reach them tonight, and, um, as I mentioned, Ms. Gunning, for my own health reasons, I appreciate if we can knock off around 10:00 or 10:15, if at all possible. But we have Mr. Farr with one or two questions for me, and then we'll proceed with Mr. Hollister.
Madam Chair, I just want to confirm again for the record in terms of the applicant's opportunity to cross-examine the objectors' experts, as my understanding, again, we'll hold all those questions until the case is over.
We agreed with that, and we continue, obviously, with that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may we proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. We're continuing with Ron Farr, a forestry expert. I just have a few supplemental questions, as I mentioned. Mr. Farr, you indicated in your presentation several photographs and maps. For example, there's a map on the screen now. You also showed a vermiule map. And you also showed several photographs from 1995 through, I think, 2012 or 2015. Could you show the board each of those photographs that you used last, at the last hearing?
And ju, and just for the record, this is part of Exhibit O2, correct?
I believe so. I don't remember the number, frankly.
Okay.
It's the same exhibit that he used last week. So, okay, so starting with the vermiule map.
The vermiule map came from the, it's from the USGS, the United States Geological Survey.
And, sorry.
I'm not seeing it in the.
You just passed it, actually.
Yes, so that was the vermiule map with the, um, the forest in 1880, approximately. And then the, the following photos from 18, all the aerial photos from 1930 on to 2015.
Could you go through them one at a time? Where is this photo from?
These, this is from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, through the GIS department.
And is this available on their website?
Yes.
Okay, are, without my repeating it, are each of those DEP photos on their website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Could just continue through. Now, this is the 1995 photo, and again, is this from the DEP?
Yes.
Uh, continue on to the next. In 2002, is this photo DEP as well?
Yes.
Okay, please continue. And this is the 2007 photo. Is this same source?
Yes, all from New Jersey DEP.
Thank you. Please go on. 2012 photograph, and what is this source?
New Jersey DEP.
Okay. And 2015, and the source?
New Jersey DEP.
Okay, thank you. And, um, with respect, I have one question, supplemental question to put to you. With respect to the cluster site, we've heard testimony at times from the applicant's experts about the presence of invasive species on the, on the site of the would-be cluster. You recall that general testimony?
Yes.
Can you speak to what role invasive species would have in our region with respect to re-propagation or reforestation? Or succession of forests?
In our region, with the deer population, the invasive species can protect native seedlings underneath them. And eventually, they would grow through the invasive jungle and hopefully reforest the site.
And what's the methodology by which, strike that, what's the mechanism by which the invasive species can protect the native species saplings?
They provide physical protection. The deer won't necessarily walk or jump over it because they have poor 3D perception. Um, so they're not gonna try to jump through the invasive shrub layer to get to the native species to eat them.
Is there anything in the invasive layer that also deters them physically?
It's very thorny.
As opposed to native species?
Most of the native species would not be as thorny as the. As thorny.
Thank you, that's all I had. We're just changing computers.
In academia, this is known as the PowerPoint pause.
While you're setting up, at least let me swear you in. I don't, I don't think I've sworn you in previously, correct? I have not sworn you in.
No, no, he's not been sworn in.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Hollis, Professor Hollis has not been sworn in.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand. Just swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Lincoln, as in Abraham. Hollister, H-O-L-L-I-S-T-E-R.
While we're waiting for the PowerPoint, I can qualify the witness. Professor Hollister, good evening. Could you tell the planning board your academic degree?
I retired from Princeton University in 2011 as a professor of geosciences. I taught there for 43 years.
What is your primary area of study or teaching and research?
Uh, geology and petrology, study of rocks, study of metamorphic rocks primarily. How mountains are built. How continents form.
And have you made a specific study in your career of the phenomenon known as, the formation known as the Princeton Ridge?
For over 40 years, I would bring my classes into the Princeton area and in New Jersey for studying of processes that are obvious underfoot, to study the rocks. And, you know, I just kept returning and returning and returning. So it was mainly as a, for teaching and for understanding, you know, the rocks underfoot. And, uh, you know, I haven't published anything on, on, uh, on the Princeton area. I have testified over the decades to the Planning Commission, Zoning Commission, Princeton Environmental Commission, Town Council of the Township in Princeton, having to do with the relationship of the rocks and of, uh, of building and zoning issues.
And just for the record, what was your PhD in?
My PhD was in geology from Caltech.
Thank you, and thank you very much. Madam Chair, I would offer Professor Hollister as an expert in the field of geology and morphologic processes.
Yes, we accept his qualifications.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, I just have one question. I, I wasn't sure I heard it correctly. Did you say you, you have published in, regarding Princeton rock formations?
I have not published, I have not published with respect to Princeton rock, I mean. Today, for example, I taught a senior citizen class for two hours where I discussed my published results on, on the moon. So from, all right, this morning, talking about the moon, and now I'm dealing with another moon shot.
But we're on Earth, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Bruce, Bruce, before you start, you offered Professor Hollister as an expert in geology. What was the other? Could you repeat the second?
I believe the word was morphologic processes.
Do you know how to spell that?
I believe I'm correct. Sorry? Oh gee. Oh, did I say S? I'm sorry. I believe I was wrong. Thank you.
Okay, so are you able to, so just, in whatever order you go and use that whenever you're ready.
So, uh, do I advance on this one here? Hey. There you go.
Uh, I'm sorry, what is this?
I don't know.
I don't know, that goes without it.
I thought you handed that to me. So I have some geological maps of New Jersey and of the Princeton area. Maybe this is the pointer. No. How about that?
Let's, let's mark a hard copy of this as Exhibit O3.
I, do you have a hard copy of this?
There we go. So this is, uh, the geological map of New Jersey. Cape May's down here. The highlands are up here. Ex-Max Princeton. I'm not gonna discuss the geologic history of New Jersey. I'm gonna discuss some of the geology in the area immediately around Princeton. I have a prepared statement here, a couple pages along, which I will read, and I will advance slides up there as, as appropriate. And so, the rock formation that underlies the area of the proposed development is impermeable to water. It requires heavy machinery or dynamite to break it. Geologists call this rock the Rocky Hill diabase. Very hard, impermeable Rocky Hill diabase forms the ridge of Princeton Ridge. I taught graduate and undergraduate geology classes at Princeton University for 43 years, from 1968 to 2011. Almost every year, I brought my classes to study examples of geological processes that could be observed in Princeton and elsewhere in New Jersey. I have testified numerous times to Princeton councils, Princeton Planning Board, Zoning Board, Environmental Commission on the relevance of understanding the Rocky Hill diabase for rational planning, development, and zoning. This is why I'm here. I also have daily experience with the Rocky Hill diabase because I have lived on the ridge, on Ridgeview Road, since 1988, more than 30 years. The Rocky Hill diabase is a sill of basalt composition that intruded as a 2,200-degree Fahrenheit melt into the triassic sediment of the Newark Basin some 200 million years ago. This volcanic event was the result of the breaking up of the Pangaea supercontinent as Africa separated from New Jersey and the Atlantic Ocean formed. Now, one of the things when we stand here on Princeton is we look in this direction and say, that's where Morocco was. In other words, the rocks from Princeton to the north, the mirror image of those rocks are in Morocco from when the Atlantic Ocean formed. So that gets the attention of school kids. Over there was Morocco. The sedimentary layers of Newark Basin, and this is, uh, these are the sedimentary layers of Newark Basin, all of this area here, were formed during the extension of Pangaea. This is when the diabase intruded between and across layers of the sediment. One of these faults is the Hopewell Valley Fault. After restoration. So here's Hopewell Valley Fault.
Let me just note, the witness has shifted to the second page of the Exhibit O3.
It's actually the third. The first one doesn't have Princeton on, and the second one has Princeton.
I'm sorry, this is now the third pitch.
So Princeton is right here. Right where it says the Princeton Fault. These. After restoration, across this fault, and we're gonna go. After restoration, across this fault, and we're going to go, this is the scale of that previous thing, so it's about 10 miles across. This is, one of the things that we do with students and others, especially planning boards, is to try and get the sense and feeling and understanding of the three dimensions of the rock formations. So what we have above you...
May I just note, this is the exhibit that's headed Piedmont in the upper right-hand corner.
It's a cross-section. We're going from Sauerland Mountains to Rocky Hill. And I'm going to turn back to this map. This line right here is the line of the cross-section that crosses New Jersey. I've just taken a piece of it. And this, where it crosses here where it says JD, that's the Jurassic diabase, the Rocky Hill diabase. When we come to the cross-section, where we're looking at the ground vertically below us, so this is, if you stood on Rocky Hill and you drilled a hole straight down, you would go through these formations until you got the basement rocks underneath here. This is essentially the Hopewell Valley Fault, and this is the Rocky Hill diabase. You see, it intruded the triassic sediments of the Newark Basin, mostly parallel to the layers of the sediment, but crossing them. And when you restore the Rocky Hill diabase back up in the fault, these faults occurred during the breakup of Pangaea. When you restore it back up here, the Sauerland Mountains are the same as the Rocky Hill diabase. So here's our development, proposed development is approximately here on these grounds.
The witness's light laser was flashing in the area underneath the words Rocky Hill, for the record.
So the Rocky Hill diabase and the sedimentary layers above it and below it slope about 10 to 20 degrees to the north-northwest. So this dip of the rocks was produced during the extension, like pulling taffy apart, of the formation of the Atlantic Ocean. The diabase is the hardest of these layers and is most resistant to erosion. That's why it forms the high topographic features of the Sauerland Mountains and the ridge. I should add that these sills, this diabase that we're sitting on, the Rocky Hill diabase, that goes under the Newark Basin and reappears as the Palisades. So in terms of thinking of the three dimensions, think of these rocks going underneath. The Watchon Basalts are part of the same event that produced this Rocky Hill diabase. These rocks are all, the diabase, the Palisades sill, Watchon Basalts, are part of what's called the Central Atlantic Magmatic Province, which was a huge outpouring of lava about the magnitude of the Deccan Traps in India and was part of the forces that led to the separation of the continents. Now, coming to the diabase itself, the distinctive feature of this diabase is that it is impermeable to water, unlike for most sedimentary layers. Now, this is important. That's why we're here. Groundwater does not collect in the diabase. Instead, water runs off of it as if it were an asphalt surface, unless held back by vegetation such as forests and wetland grasses and the shrubbery that's on the development site. This impermeability is due to the interlocking of feldspar and pyroxene crystals that make a three-dimensional framework, sort of like fiberboard. This is easily seen on fresh, broken surfaces. This interlocking framework also makes the diabase very hard to break, even with very strong construction equipment. The only places where water can percolate through the diabase are in the few places where faults or joints exist. And here, of course, we see a fault, and there are many smaller faults and joints in the rocks. However, the weathering products of the diabase, which are clay minerals, they clog these pathways, for the most part. So not only is the diabase impermeable to water, but the weathering products, these clay minerals, actually clog up any fractures that are in the rock. So the feldspar and the pyroxene minerals that are in the diabase, they weather to a clay, which is called montmorillonite, and they weather in the presence of humic acid. So the forest cover, the root structure, the humic acid and water reacts with the diabase to create these clay minerals. And the clay minerals themselves, when they are deposited, are impermeable. And you may be thinking about vernal ponds. Why are these vernal ponds on the top of the ridge? It's because the diabase is impermeable to water, and these clay minerals that are produced by the weathering of the root structures are also impermeable to water. So it just makes a seal, and a seal on the top of the ridge, and you have your perched water tables with the pond. Weathering out of the, of the seal, if you will, or the clay minerals in the cracks on the slopes of the diabase leads to this bouldery appearance of the diabase. And I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, but generally speaking, I would guess somewhere between 70 and 90% of people who live in Princeton, in spite of being told multiple times otherwise, think these boulders are glacial deposits, glacial moraines. They are not. They are the product of these weathering processes that's peculiar to the diabase and other igneous rocks in other parts of the world. So it's not boulders like being washed downstreams or what have you, or turned over in glaciers. It's just a lag deposit, not a deposit. It looks like a boulder because you see, as soon as the humus in the soil is eroded off of the boulder, then the reactants for making the clay minerals, for dissolving the boulders by chemical weathering, are taken away. So as soon as the boulders are exposed to the air, or the rock is exposed to the air, it results in a boulder. So everybody here knows about these bouldery ridges, and I hope you're all very happy to now know how they formed. So the important take-home fact is that the diabase is absolutely impermeable to water. So anybody that tells you that the water goes into the groundwater, goes into the water table, doesn't understand the diabase. And I'll tell you where else it's not understood. That's in the inventory of environmental resources of Princeton town. And you can look in the section about the diabase, and almost everything in that section is wrong. So anybody that read that and thinks that you are getting the true word is dead wrong. I can explain it. I did explain it to somebody on the Environmental Commission that asked me to look at it when I still had a day job teaching at Princeton University. I didn't have the time to go through it in detail. But I did have an exchange, an email exchange, and I have that exchange where I said, "These are the things in that document that need to be fixed because they're wrong. They're misleading and wrong." And I submit that a number of zoning board members and planning board members and builders and construction people have read that document, and they think it's right. That includes water being able to go into the rock. So in spite of my multiple times testifying between planning boards, zoning boards, councils, the word did not get through. It's a great disappointment. I am gleefully and joyfully getting myself recorded on here for the first time in 50 years. I've been trying to get this message across. Thank you for your patience on that. So, anyway, this process of weathering and impermeability is what leads to the vernal pools and perched water tables and the vernal habitat. These things are, I live on the ridge. These things are precious to the ridge. They're part of why the ridge is, you know, singled out as something environmentally sensitive. I've given you some reason why it's environmentally sensitive. But if you remove the vegetation from the top of the ridge, you're essentially going to remove the source of water for these vernal ponds and the vernal habitat. Because the water doesn't percolate into the rock. It flows off the rock. If it rains, if it's very hard, there'll be like flash flooding, like the parking lot of Princeton Shopping Center. If there's vegetation there, which the vegetation has been growing there since the farming stock, that slows down the water, slows down the rainfall, and allows the water to slowly percolate through the root structure, which still has to be there, to react with the diabase and to produce the clays and the water for the vernal pools. So without the runoff, and this is my last sentence, or if the runoff occurs and flash floods, it is not held back by vegetation, the pools will dry up and the vernal habitat will be lost. Thank you.
Can I just have one moment, please?
Sorry?
I want to speak with one of our experts for a moment. Thank you.
Actually, I want to come back briefly. We were talking about this. This is an expansion of the map, the New Jersey map. And the landowners, here's Harrington Lane, Harrington Road, Mount Lucas. So here's the diabase. Here's the northwestern contact of the diabase, which is on the property but barely. All of the property is on the diabase. And you go on over the top towards Harrington Road here. So this is the diabase. And you can see the topographic lines here. I hope you can see them. I can see them. Wasn't sure they would show up. Which shows the slope of the hills, and the development areas in here. And you can see from this topographic line here and this one here, the water runs from this area to the southwest, feeding the vernal pools that are in here.
There's a brown line running on a slight angle from the top through to the center of the red cranberry bar. Is that roughly where Harrington Road is?
I have a major physical handicap.
Yes.
It's called color blindness.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have the foggy side of the... The brown line is...
Sorry about that. I don't actually have a work...
I took, figured this out. Don't push that button, right there.
I don't know. You're denying everybody else a chance, maybe.
I hope I don't blind members of the board, because I've never used one of these.
There it is. There you go.
I am pointing Professor Hollister to a brown line where you were pointing before. Is that intended to be Harrington Road?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And this area in the immediate circle between the contour lines above the right angle on Harrington Road, is that what you said was the development site?
That's where I believe it is, yes. And that road to the vertical line to the right there, that's Harrington Lane.
Oh, here. That's Harrington Lane, running vertically up and down.
Right, right.
Very well. Thank you very much. I just wanted to identify that. And just for the record, then, that this exhibit is the exhibit with the, it's primarily the cranberry-colored layer, which occupies most of the image.
You know, the map and the resources of Princeton, whatever, you know, has, you know, shows this or the piece of it, but it misses these little symbols. These little symbols here are incredibly important for geologists or anybody because it shows what's called the strike and the dip of the rocks. You cannot get that information out of the...
Yes. Can you explain what the strike and the dip are? You were pointing to a cross-T structure on the bottom and on the top of the bar of color. Can you explain what those are for the record? A strike and dip.
These, on this cross-section, this is the dip. You see, these layers are dipping 10 to 20 degrees? So those symbols tell you that there are these layers that dip in that direction. The strike is a horizontal line within one of these, any of these layers. So the dip is perpendicular to the horizontal line, and it shows what the slope of the rocks is. So we have numerous of these symbols here, 21 degrees, 17 degrees. So this, these rocks are sloping 17 degrees, almost due north.
Which slide is this?
What?
Which slide is this?
It's one of the ones we're looking at.
It's hard to follow which slide you are on. Let me see, one thing. If you, I have the hard copy here.
Do you have the hard copy? I have one of the PowerPoints.
Madam Chair, I'm just going to get the original exhibit, and I'll identify for Ms. Lutia which page we're on. which page we're on.
So when Bruce went to get something, that reminded me of this whole lesson for you all.
The present exhibit that Mr. Lattisia asked about is the third page of the hard copy, and that is right before the page that has the scale in the center of the page. The page where he referred to the strike and dip, which has mostly the cranberry bar layer, is the fifth page of the exhibit, just for the record. I have some follow-up questions. Do you have anything further in your presentation?
Unless I think up some.
I have a few follow-up questions. Professor Hollister, you referred to the weathering process. Just for the record, could you define what weathering means in this context?
Well, there's physical weathering, mechanical weathering, and that's not what I'm talking about.
So please define what you're referring to.
This is chemical weathering, where the rock, as a solid rock, reacts with some solution and dissolves some of the rock.
And the solution, it comes from where in this structure? We have the soil and roots and vegetation, we have the diabase, so where does the weathering occur?
It's at the contact between the soil and the rock. And it's humic acid from the soil, plus water from rainwater, plus rock, equals montmarillonite, which is a clay mineral made out of sodium, calcium, aluminum, silicon, all the compounds, it's, it's, it's a clay.
Now, the vernal pools are holding water. What is in their substrate that allows them to retain the water?
This clay, clay is a very platey-like mineral. Now, you can go up on the ridge, you don't have to trespass anywhere, you can just step on a pond on the side of the road and put your fingers into the soil, and you'll feel it kind of slidy and slippery. It's not gritty, it's, it's slippery.
And where is that?
And, and, and this is because it's made up of all these plates that sit there like this, so the mineral will have a shape like this. And so when that mineral is deposited, this one is deposited on top of this one, on top of that one, that makes an impermeable barrier.
For the record, Doug, Professor Hollister was holding sheets of paper on top of each other to illustrate his point about the layers and the plates. And so these minerals are coming from the diabase weathering process?
They're made as a product of the weathering. It's a reaction, A plus B equals C plus D.
Is it your testimony then that the weathering produces the clay minerals which run down to form the base of the pools?
They, they're carried by the water to a low place, like a vernal pool, and accumulate there. And the more they accumulate, the more there's a barrier for that water to go down, whether it can actually go down because the diabase is there, but it could run off between the soil and the rock. And, but, because the clay is there and it's a shallow depression, the water does not run off.
And this forms the vernal pools.
And that forms the vernal pool.
Thank you. I have no further questions unless anyone from the board at this point should have anything.
Wait, I think we'll wait on that.
I, I did want to just ask a follow-up question about the ver- yeah, I wanted to ask a follow-up question about the vernal pools. Can you say sort of on average about how far below the surface the diabase is located in this area?
Lot shallower than anybody thinks, like it's.
Inches, feet, what's the?
It's no more than, you know, than a foot or two, because the soil, you know, there is a soil, it's a very granular kind of stuff, and there's a reason that the farm didn't work very well out there, because there really isn't the soil all on the ridge. People tried farming, but they didn't know that the rock didn't make any soil.
Okay.
And if you're on the top of a ridge, for example, where the development site is, I think you'll need very heavy equipment or dynamite to get more than a couple feet below the surface. So, you know, I don't know, obviously, because I haven't dug there, but I've lived on the top of the ridge at the exact equivalent place, and houses on the ridge, you know, you don't have basements or it's very hard to have a basement. And our garden, my son has made magnificent gardens, but it's all raised bed gardens, because you can't dig down, even though there are no boulders on the surface, you still get to bedrock within a few, with a few feet. It was magnificently displayed, this phenomenon from the office buildings were being constructed on Bun Drive. And the more they dug down, the harder the rock part, and the bigger the equipment they had to bring in, in order to bash up the, bash the rock.
Okay. So I guess where I initially thought you were going was that because the, the diabase is so shallow that the, essentially the groundwater in the spring comes all the way to the surface, that the soil is saturated.
No groundwater goes, no groundwater goes through the diabase at all. Now, showing with the cross-sections, you can see that it.
But, but if there's a couple feet of soil, there's going to be groundwater in that soil, it just would fill up to the surface quickly because there's not a lot of depth.
Not very much groundwater, but, you know, there is this term perched water table.
What does that mean?
Well, it's at the top. If you drill down into the diabase, you don't drill in, you don't find groundwater, there's not many.
Right, it's on top, yeah.
It's just a, it's perched. Am I having trouble with that word, perched?
Oh, you said parched.
Perched.
Perched.
Perched, perched, sorry. My lips are parched.
So I just, initially I thought that was the, what you were trying to explain, but then with the latest comments about the clay soil being impervious, essentially you're sort of saying just all the water is staying right on top.
Yes.
And not soaking in even to the couple feet of soil you might have.
That's right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then if you've got a little dip, it can be retained there, but if you've got a hard rain, it's gonna have some velocity as it's running across the surface and it's not gonna stick around. If, if the vegetation is removed, is that?
That's right.
Okay.
You got it.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're saying.
Thank you for your question, though.
What, to what extent is the water that percolates through the soil above the diabase providing the water supply to the ponds?
Speak into the mic.
Sorry. To what extent is the water that percolates supplying water to the vernal ponds or pools
The water at this interface between the root structure and the rock flows parallel to the rock's surface, seeps parallel to it, and eventually collects in the low places, which are where the vernal pools are.
So it follows the grade of the rock down to the low place?
Right, yes, yes.
Creating the water in the pools?
Yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Professor, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Glad to hear. Have an audience.
His name?
Is that?
Uh, yes. Our next.
This is the next report.
And I, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's the end of it, thank you.
If I could, thank you, sir, for pointing out, Dr. Hollister, the, it's, it's me, the error in the environmental resource inventory. One of the recommendations in the green building and sustainability element that the, that is being developed right now is to update the environmental resource inventory, and we appreciate your insight into that and will put it on a fast track. It's a really important note, so thank you.
All I need is an audience, I've been looking for it for a long time. Yes, be glad, very glad to help you. And I can start by sending my correspondence.
Yeah, I would, I'd just follow up with that. Actually, it's funny you mention it, because just in the past meeting we had, I brought that, not the geology section up, but I just mentioned that we need to update the ERI, so, can you hear me? Yeah, sorry, I'll speak. Yeah, so I just actually mentioned that at our last meeting, that we need to update the environmental resource inventory, so if you're willing to volunteer, I would recommend getting in touch with Sophie Glovier.
Very glad to, I'm not getting any younger, I've been here 50 years.
Yeah, thank you.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So it's sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Yes, it's Blaine Rothhauser, R-O-T-H-A-U-S-E-R.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce his qualifications. Would you please state your professional affiliations and associations?
Okay. Professional affiliations and associations are, well, the best thing to do is just give you the my whole background.
Why don't you tell us who you are, what you do, where you're educated, and your degree?
So, I graduated with a degree in biology from Kane University, jumped right into the environmental consulting world, working for various nonprofits and land trusts, Fish and Wildlife Service, and during that time, I continued my education through Rutgers and Montclair State, garnering over 300 continuing credits in wetland science, threatened endangered species science, land use compliance, and also environmental impact studies. During this time too, I became a certified ecological restoration practitioner through the globally recognized Society of Ecological Restoration, and that is a lot of what I do today. I worked with Dona Associates for 10 years, an environmental consulting firm out of Pittstown, New Jersey, functioning as their chief ecologist, senior ecologist in wetland science, where I've submitted and had authenticated over 100 wetland delineations, stormwater management permits, flood hazard permits, all New Jersey-based land use compliance work. Worked about a decade with them, and then the next decade I worked, became my own environmental president for BR Environmental, where I did much of the same, especially threatened endangered species compliance work, working with some of the top zoologists and endangered species biologists in the state. They've hired me professionally to use my talents as a professional wildlife photographer, which I hope you'll get the feel of by the end of the, the hour. But that's important, because that work that I did was essential for me being sought after as a threatened endangered species expert. I've testified at dozens of, for dozens of boards, municipalities, superior court level. Recently, the last five years, I've worked as a senior ecologist, full-time for GZA, Geo-Environmental, a multidisciplinary environmental consulting firm, that I support their land use compliance, their geotext, their site remediation work, especially in the restoration field, and continue to do threatened endangered species studies. I could go on, but that's, that's a summary.
Just one question. You mentioned you work for the Fish and Wildlife Service, is that the federal or state service?
U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, in my younger days, working on the space of species control of purple loo strife.
You work for any New Jersey state agencies as well?
Uh, I've, I've submitted, thank you for asking, over 80 threatened endangered species reports that were authenticated, verified, and now become part of probably something in the past five years this board has used, because somebody has testified about a threatened endangered species and might have been one that I had put into record and have authenticated by the Endangered Nongame Species Program. I'm very aggressive when it comes to reporting threatened endangered species throughout the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we would offer Mr. Rothhauser as an expert in environmental and wetland science and biology.
Thank you, we accept his credentials.
Thank you. Mr. Rothhauser is gonna make his presentation, and I may have some questions at the end or possibly going through it. I think it's fairly lengthy, so at any point the chair wants the evening break, please just let us know and we can stop at any point. I mean for a five-minute break if you want it. He's gonna be fairly long.
Bruce, do you have a hard copy of this?
Uh, we, do you have a hard copy yet?
Oh, by the way, we can offer the CVs to the applicants and also the board.
Yeah, we'll offer his CV as an exhibit.
I have this on a PDF.
That'll be exhibit 04?
That'd be 04, yes. And I, I'm just saying, he will be probably about 90 minutes, I imagine, so if the chair wants a break for any time at any point, it's appropriate, so.
Okay.
I can offer the presentation as a PDF.
Yes, go ahead.
We will get a hard copy over to the board and to Mr. Lattisia.
Okay, thank you. Looking forward to giving you a diametrically opposite point of view that you've heard thus far. I've listened to every testimony, I've been at three of the last meetings where Mr. Affrin has crossed the opposition's experts. So what you're about to hear, first, the first thing to say is that all the images that you're going to see in this program are images that I've either documented onsite, most of them though represent the species that I documented during my 2019 survey events. I'll get into that in a second. So everything that you see on the screen is a species that actually exists on the landwin property. And of course, you're gonna ask, was I on the property? I was around the periphery of the, the property during all my survey work, except for the November, very brief, three-hour event. November being the nadir of phenology of all these critters, phenology, the timing of their occurrences. You're not going to see spring ephemeral flowers, you're not going to see certain species of migrating bird at that time, you're not gonna see certain mammal species in a two, three-hour walk.
Let me just interrupt. Are you referring to the walk that we took with Mr. Muller, some board members, and one of the experts from the applicant?
That's correct.
And that was a three-hour approximate walk through the site?
Correct.
Now, you said you were on the perimeter and other inspections. Did you go through the entire site in that three hours or stay on the perimeter?
We, we traversed a quarter of the site, especially to the northwest and a little bit of the southeast where the vernal habitat was predominant.
Did you go through the cluster site?
And we went directly through the cluster site, yes.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
So what you're looking So what you're looking at here is Herentown Road, the paper road that goes from the eastern portion to the northwestern portion, just to give you a little bearing. And that smattering of critters up there, again, depict images either from my vast wildlife database or directly on the site. I'll try to, during the course of this presentation, point out the images that I took directly on the site.
Let me just ask one question. The photographs you're going to show in total, are they, what source are they from? Whether they were from on the site or from other sites? Are they your photographs?
Yeah, I just mentioned, they're all my photographs that I took, but they, the ones that represent the actual pictures taken on the site, I will try to point out as I'm going along. But the point being is, my survey work, obviously, I couldn't photograph everything as I'm trying to get as much information as I can during field in-sight-to-work. I document in showing you what they look like. Here's
Mr. Rothhauser, please try to say the page number of each slide as you refer to each one for the record.
Okay, so the best way to introduce the landwin property and its biodiversity is to provide a, just a snippet of what's actually out there. But I hope that you can get the feel that at the end of this introduction of the type of diversity that exists on the site, that it is diametrically opposite of what all the prior testimonies seem to indicate, that nothing to see here, you know, invasive species, you know, couple of common birds, you know, and nothing else. Move along. Well, I'm here to tell you, it's quite a different story when you're an ecologist and you know what you're actually looking at. So let's take a snippet of those of diversity, starting from the canopy in this structured environment. That was Slide 2. Slide 3 is an image of a yellow-billed cuckoo. How many people even realize that these type of birds exist in New Jersey? This is a neotropical bird that you would find right now in Ecuador, not here, but it breeds up in our woodlands, under the right conditions. And this is very important. This particular species is not threatened, not endangered, and it's not special concern, but it is one, it's a songbird. So as a songbird, it's eight out of 10 worldwide are in decline. So keep that in the back of your head when I talk about songbirds. Most of them are declining worldwide. This particular one is mostly found in the canopy. I did not see it during my bird surveys. I heard the distinctive vocalization. Most people who do avian surveys go by visual and by vocalizations. That's very common practice amongst avian specialists. So I could clearly hear this particular bird calling from the interior sections of landwin. How do I know it's the interior on Herentown Paper Road, listening toward the interior, the most buffered part? And that's the only place you're going to see yellow-billed cuckoos in areas where you have buffered habitat. So that was Slide number 3. Slide number 4, again, I hope, unless you're a bird aficionado, you're probably surprised to see something so colorful and so beautiful. But this is another relatively common forest bird, also a bird of edges in, against quality forests, you will find cedar waxwings. Again, not threatened or endangered, but a species that's making its living, or a portion of its living, on the landwin property. Now, when I get to the avian survey that I did and explain it to you, I'll explain that most of the birds in the formal survey, remember, I'm out, I was out there 12 days, averaging four to eight hours during that period. And so I'm taking ancillary avian sightings and adding it to my master list of landwins. So this is one that I'm assuming is breeding on the site because I saw it in late July. This is one of the later nesting birds.
Which bird is this?
This is a cedar waxwing. So I'm assuming it's breeding on site. But even if it's not, if a bird is on landwin, it's fulfilling one aspect or another of its life history in what the site has to, has within its context to provide for those species. Canopy species, you can find this on the ground if you have the right lights to attract them, but some of you may recognize it as a silk moth. It's one of the giant silk moths called a Socropia moth. This was physically photographed on the site. It's a canopy species that I attracted to a metal halide light, which I'll talk about in the middle of the program. But this is a spectacular animal that exists on landwin. I could say conclusively because this image is an actual documentation. Slide number 5 is a eastern swallowtail.
Let me clarify. The last slide was 5. It didn't have a number on the screen.
Okay, so this is slide number 6.
This will be 6. Again, it does not have a number at this time.
The majority of this program has the slide number. I apologize.
Could you say what this was again?
This is an eastern swallowtail. You see these mostly up in the canopy. The site is loaded, as Ron Farr pointed out, with pretty mature tulip trees. And this is a tulip tree specialist, especially in the spring when that tree is in bloom. But you can see this on the ground. Here it is mineralizing on the ground. This is a depiction of many eastern swallowtails.
Did you see that species on the site?
Yes. All of these species have been seen on the site, Bruce.
By you?
By you, by me. I've documented, I've said that numerous times now.
Well, I don't believe you said some of the others you didn't see.
Every species you see in this program were seen on the site, or heard, or vocalized on the site. Either visually or through vocalizations. When it's birds, it's going to be vocalizations. And sightings, in sightings, it's going to be one or the other.
I think the witness has explained that when he means he has seen the species on the site, it's either by visual observation or by vocalization, hearing the animal.
Let me clarify. I've documented every species that you're going to see as being on the site, either through scat. In some cases, the mammals that I've documented were through scat in print. The birds were either vocalizations, or I visualized them on the site. Some of the anorans, which means frogs and toads in total, they were either seen or heard vocalizing. Hope that clarifies. Okay, slide number 8, we'll look at some of the more interesting understory species that I've seen. Remember, this is not a complete record. I'm just whetting your whistle as to the diversity of this site. So everybody probably recognizes the common chickadee. By the way, that's staghorn sumac. That is a shrub that is documented on the site that the chickadee is resting on. Slide number 10 is a common garter snake on spice bush. This is what spice bush is going to look like in about three weeks when it's in bloom. That's a native shrub. There's plenty of that in the woodlands. Garter snakes are quite common throughout. Obviously
Let me ask you, I'm going to occasionally interrupt just to clarify. If you go back to Slide 10, please. How did you observe that, how did you document that species on site?
I saw a garter snake on Herentown right-of-way. I saw much of the fauna just by walking to Herentown right-of-way. And, but I've seen this particular species on the periphery of the site on three occasions. This is a common, everybody knows garter snakes are probably our most common snake that you're going to find in your gardens, on the edges of your property, in woodpiles. And obviously, all of your common backyard species are documented, squirrels, woodchucks, white-footed mice, et cetera, are all documented. This was interesting. This is in, during our walking in November, and I forget the gentleman who was with me, but I made it a point to point it out to him that amongst the flocks, a flock of more common subwinter species, late fall, early winter birds, they call it intraspecific flocks, of white-throated sparrows, junkos, blue jays, cardinals, there were golden-crowned kinglets. I visualized them and documented them during that particular November survey.
That's Slide 12. When you refer to the gentleman who was with you, you're, I was with you, Mr. Muller was with you part of the walk. You're referring to the applicant's expert?
That escorted us, and I apologize for forgetting his name. Very, very accommodating person. Remember, he roughed it through some of the very thick underbrush that we had to crawl under at the epicenter of the cluster, of the future cluster. Here's a white-throated sparrow, very common this time of the year. Will find its way to boreal forests in about three to four weeks, but it's here for the winter.
That was Slide 13.
Slide 14, I am introducing the undergrowth community. Again, keep in mind, this is a snippet. I'm trying to get you excited about what's really within this forest complex. Here's a pickerel frog. This is a species I didn't hear, but I saw on more than one occasion, especially during my spring survey events, in the edges of, the riparian edges of the Van Horn Brook, more specifically. Again, we'll talk about my nocturnal lepidoptera surveys, just a fancy way of saying a moth, M-O-T-H, survey using a metal halide light. But this is a, this is revealing, the species in the center that's so prominent is called the herald. Absolutely gorgeous species, not uncommon. People, the average person doesn't realize what's in their own environment now, how quickly we lose things and how beautiful these things are and how abundant they can be. The species to the right is a bicolored sallow, very, very common fall species. Species up top is a roadside sallow. But all these species were seen during a survey event where we use bait, that's what that squished-up material is on that twig that they were attracted to. But the herald is a specialist. It's a specialist of sweetgum. So a lot of what we see in terms of one species tells us about a whole nexus of other species. That's why we do these surveys, because we get, we derive a lot of information, a lot of optical value out of looking at species in totality. Inventory is so important. Part of any good environmental impact statement, environmental assessment, is to actually get out and look, okay? The problem with these types of applications where you just can't get out to the site because they just don't want you finding stuff, quite honestly, because that paints a completely diametrically opposite picture of nothing to see here. So it's very important to have access. And by the way, I'll get into that during another image.
That was Slide 16.
Slide 17 is a 12-spotted skimmer. This is along the state-open water, the Van Horn Brook.
To be clear, the Van Horn Brook bisects the site or travels the site?
It follows the western edge of landwin. It does go into landwin as well. And I only went into the areas that I was allowed to traverse. But obviously, these aquatic systems are where a lot of the action is from a diversity standpoint. And here's another species that I'm going to guess that the majority of the people in this room never saw in their life. But this is a relatively common odinate, that's a fancy way of saying dragonfly, skimmer. And this was in the, out in the open, along a riparian edge. They love to sun themselves and defend territories from prominent vegetation where they can be seen by other males. So they're easy to photograph. That particular species was photographed on site, as was this bicolored bumblebee. Now, I want to stress that entomology in 2020, if anybody's reading journals of ecology, our insects are in severe decline worldwide for various reasons. Don't need to go into the dissertation, but the point is, the bumblebees especially, the bombardes, are especially vulnerable to extinctions. And this particular bicolored bumblebee on a native horse bum flower, I believe, is, was nice to see. I was glad to see it wasn't a European bumblebee, which is what I mainly see. So bear that in mind.
That was Slide 18.
Yep. Now, I put these bird species in the undergrowth because you see them mostly at ground level. The species on the left is a juvenile white-crowned sparrow. Again, it's more of a winter visitor. It'll be gone by first or second week in April. The brown creeper is a species in severe decline. But I saw more than, on more than one occasion, I saw brown creeper. I don't know, I don't have any evidence of them nesting on landwin, probably not, just not enough elm, which is a favorite breeding host tree. But it is a very unique component of the landwin biogeography. All the common species you see here, it doesn't surprise anybody, but the one in the bottom left, I hope you recognize, is a muskrat. It's not a beaver. Saw that along the Van Horn Brook, a little bit surprised, the habitat is borderline. But there is a small lake, the locals call it something behind the assisted living. It's not a lake, it's a pond. It's a muddy, mucky pond, and I'm assuming that there's a pair of muskrats that call that particular portion home. Here's Slide 21 is a rufous-sided tohi. This is a spectacular bird. Male and females look completely different. I have photographs of this bird on landwin, but they don't do it justice. This is one from my vast database that represents the males that I did see on the site. This is a pretty common ground foraging bird on landwin. How spectacular is that? This is, and it's vulnerable. I'll get into the impacts that I believe make it so vulnerable, but right now, there's a number of nesting pairs, at least in 2019, that call landwin property home.
What was that name again?
Rufous-sided tohi. Again, this is a type of carpenter bee, but the flower is what I'm bringing your attention to. This is monkey flower. This is a wetland flower that blooms in late spring, early summer. Great, great plant, great wetland obligate plant. You only find it under mucky, wet conditions, supporting these microbees. Again, all the microbees are in decline worldwide. Ron Farr brought to your attention through the Van Cliff Princeton Ridge study of all the, all of the exceptional flora, some of them with only 12 populations in the state, others others with 16 to 30, and then the S3 plants. In totality, they're along Princeton Ridge. It's a great site. As Lincoln Hollister pointed out, it holds water through the diabase. The soils are rich, meaning very organic, mucky, holds a lot of nutrients. The forested cover creates these shady, cool microclimates, and that is a set of ingredients to attract rare flora. This is, again, I wasn't on this in the interior of the site to really poke around. I didn't have that much access. But along the Van Horn Brook, toad trillium, not a threat or endangered plant, but a rare plant, was found amongst riparian edges in a rich wood environment. The more you look, the more you find. This is not an uncommon beetle, but it's a fascinating one. It's an important one as a detritivore. It helps bring nutrients back into the system. This is a fungus beetle. Really, it's a type of carrion beetle, but it also functions as a pollinator. This was found along Herrentown Road. When I say Herrentown Road for the rest of the night, just think of the right-of-way, that paper road. That's where a lot of my observations were made. And it's the little things that make a difference. It's bottleflies, it's all of your midges, your wasps and your ants. I documented all of the insects that I could key to at least genera, and I could provide the board with the final list.
For the record, the slide with the fungus beetle was 24, and that depicting the fly species was slide 25.
Slide 26 is of a wild geranium, very common wild flower in spring. We call them ephemerals because they pop up before leaf out, so they can catch and do their thing and create seed before there's too much shade. Very common wild flower that's still managing under heavy deer browse condition, as are wild blueberry. Found that in many places around the periphery of the site and also during our November walk. The beech drops that you see on the right is a parasite. It's a, has no chlorophyll, and it feeds on the roots of beech trees. This was incredibly prevalent during our walk in November in a winter form. In winter, it looks like a dried twiggy plant coming out of the ground, but if you know what you're looking at, it's pretty distinctive.
Did you photograph it in the flowering?
No, no.
That's an example.
That's an example of it. Again, I'm gonna point out the images that I actually took on site as opposed to off-site.
Could you just state the name of the parasitic plant?
It's a, it's called beech drops.
Beech drops.
Trout lily is in the bottom left. Everybody probably recognizes that, that has any woodlands in your backyard. It does very well. And by the way, it's a, it's an ant-propagated flower. The plant itself gives a seed that has a fatty covering that the ant will carry far from where it was dropped, so it gets propagated all over the forest floor. So, if you see trout lily, all I'm saying is there's ant species associated with it.
Was a lily observed during your walk through the site?
Yes. Every species, Bruce, in this program has been seen on the site unless I call it out as I didn't see it.
I'm just a lawyer. We're neurotic about the record.
Yeah. You're being a bit persnickety, Bruce.
Thank you. That's my job.
So, here's an exception, and that's what I'm gonna call out. These are species that Ron talked about in the Princeton Ridge survey. I was unable to do a spring ephemeral survey. I couldn't get on the site. But, as Ron pointed out, there's mature forests, there's rich woods, there's seepage areas. We've testified to that and have proof of all those geophysical, physical conditions. So, there's no reason to think that remnant populations of Virginia pennywort, wild confrey, bloodroot won't be on the site. How do I know that? How can I make that, assert that with such confidence? Well, just look across the street at Herrentown Woods. It's in the same geophys geographic province, the Piedmont. It's in the same forest cover and structure. It's in the same diabase condition as Lincoln Hollister tested to. There's no reason to think these aren't on the site. Again, we have, we're working with one hand tied behind our back to try to present to this board what the actual conditions of this site are and what the impacts could potentially be based on each species' life history. Each species is gonna be affected in a different way. The impacts we can predict, but how they are gonna affect these species, we don't know. All I know is that species disappear before our eyes. That's why we live in the anthropocene. We live in an era where human condition is accelerating the demise of life on Earth. I mean, anybody who reads a paper knows that, doesn't have to listen to Blaine Rothhauser to come up with that answer. Here's a species almost for sure should be found on the Landwin site. John Clark did a walk in Herrentown Woods last May, found many new patches of this particular species right across the street from the Landwin site. Again, same, same mosaics, same forest structure, same hydrologic underpinnings. Most likely, this particular species called showy orchid. I love its Latin name, Spectabilis. It's really small. It's only about three inches high, so it's hard to find. These things, you need an expert to go out and try to bioprospect them, because if you're just an average Joe walking through, and by the way, the consultants that I heard had basically zero ecological background in their resumes. Foresters, okay? Engineers. I mean, Bruce, I think, did a great job of pointing out the flaws in testimony. It was just as superficial as I've ever seen in doing this type of work. Stunning, really.
With respect to slide 29, if you can go back.
Yes, sir.
What time of year would you expect to see that species flower out as it's depicted there?
This is a spring ephemeral, so I believe it's a, I've only seen it twice in New Jersey, and I believe I saw it in May. Matter of fact, I'm almost sure I saw it in May blooming, so I believe it's a May blooming species.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome. So, this is the second third of my presentation. You, the planning board, have a pretty simple equation that I am gonna try to provide you with a pretty clear answer to. And that is 10B 189-1 of the Cluster Ordinance, which says that you're to evaluate the residential cluster, make sure that it will not have an unreasonable adverse impact upon the area in which it is proposed to be established. The evaluations shall include reference to the natural resource inventory, which I'm hoping everyone on the board has read, not cover to cover, but referencing all the north-western parts of Princeton. Now, you can, within two hours, really get a feel for what the land use is like in this part of Princeton Township by just spending a little time in that NRI. Well, it's called a ERI in Princeton. They, they're interchangeable. Natural Resource Inventory, Environmental Resource Inventories are one and the same.
May I interrupt at this point? We usually take a break, especially when we have a reporter.
I did not hear the question.
No, it's not a question. It's about the break.
Oh.
Okay. For five minutes?
Oh!
We shouldn't.
Comfy? Yeah, I have kind of a low-key role tonight.
Actually, I do too. I have to fight with you.
Sure.
Fight with Jerry.
Yeah. Doesn't change.
How's your colleague?
Who's that?
Rosella. Rosella. Is it Rosella?
Rosella.
Oh, I have his card. Here.
Any surprise?
B.L.A., oh, good. I am, yeah, I am.
Okay, I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, we're ready.
So, the last point, can you hear me? There we go. No, it's not on. That went off. It went off some reason. Is there a button? Oh, there we go.
There we go. Last point I wanted to make is that you all have a, I think, a pretty easy job. You gotta, if you consider that the area is an environmentally sensitive area, the rest will follow. I'll get into that by slide 31, pointing out that it is designated in the Environmental Resource Inventory and in the master plan as an environmentally sensitive area. They call it out in different ways. They say critical habitat, sensitive habitat, but the meaning is synonymous. It's a area where, over millennia, this diversity has evolved. These things, these types of food webs don't evolve overnight. They take long periods of time to reach the stages that they're in, to reach the relationship levels that they find themselves currently in. A good, for instance, is the ants that may be pollinating that showy orchid. They have to find them, find each other. That takes time to occur. So, take that into consideration, but they're environmentally sensitive lands. You're gonna lose 30 acres in totality through this direct take, this deforestation. Is that unreasonable? Well, I am going to continue to convince you, but all you really need is this document to give you the answers that you seek. Again, they call it an Environmental Resource Inventory, but that's exchangeable with Natural Resource Inventory. In this document, you'll see sections on surface water, quantity and quality. I'll talk about that quickly in a few slides. Groundwater, quality, recharge supply, all this is in this document. The biologic resources of Princeton Township are all delineated. It's vegetative covers, it's sensitive habitats, it's animal communities, including the rare species. It also has a very important section that I would hope that all of you have already looked at, and that is, where does Landwin site fit in a greater landscape proper? In other words, is it working in a vacuum, or is it confined? Is it connected to other sensitive habitats? How is the system nexus? And why is that important? Well, if you're a bobcat, if you're a, by the way, there's been bobcat sightings in Princeton Ridge in the last month. They need corridors to, natural corridors in which to function. Same with bears, mostly bruins, that try to extend their ranges. They never really find a large enough habitat to stay put, but they need these connected habitats to at least attempt to find the right home. So, there's been many bear sightings in Mercer County. So, it's this connectivity of, and also the local wildlife that needs to genetically disperse itself in order to strengthen its gene pool and continue its generations on infinitum. So, the major takeaways I have from the Environmental Resource Inventory interface with the Landwin property are these. And I cite on slide 34 the pages that you can reference for these statements that are made. Princeton Ridge remains a contiguous greenway, just as I said, where only a few major roads fragment its continuance, where Landwin property is apart. The ERI states that these remaining forest areas are the healthiest in the township inventory. Healthiest in the township inventory. Here's the map that supports that. Here's Landwin right here, right? So, it's part of Princeton Ridge, which is right here, right? Now, let me go back and tell you about the colors, okay? So, the red are your major forested covers. Your lighter green are subforest habitats, but they're just of a different vegetative community. The yellow is open meadow, quality grassland-type habitats, and the darker green are your riparian zones. So, in totality, you have multihabitats, which is always good for biodiversity, and you have a great system of, called Princeton Ridge, big corridor for which to operate, going the opposite.
Can you tell us again, are you able to show us where the Landwin site is on the last slide?
Yep. I apologize. There we go. It's right here. That's right there.
Where the yellow circle is.
Where the yellow circle is. And this is the Princeton Ridge itself, and it continues off the site, off the township.
Excuse me, Mr. Acton. Where is this plan? Is this from the, you mean the map?
Page 30 on the ERI.
So, it looks like it's, it's next to page ninety-eight in the binder, but it is the same map. And in fact, I, well, it's the same map.
You also made a reference of some language on page thirty.
He was referring to the map being on page thirty, but he was using the two thousand and nine, sorry. He was referring to the map being on page thirty, but in the current version at the table, the pages are different. We will endeavor to supply the correct cross-references to satisfy Mr. Tiesia's interest.
So, the state master plan values these corridors. It's not just Princeton Township that values it, it's the state. In order to sustain our rich natural history, these corridors are earmarked for just such a board's decision-making, to try to, to the best extent practicable, get these into preservation. Matter of fact, a more recent document by the Endangered Non-Game Species Program, last year's two thousand and nineteen document, Connecting Habitat Across New Jersey, is a guide to areas within the state that require preservation to assure that species have areas to traverse and be ecologically viable into the future.
What agency is that document on slide thirty-four?
Endangered Non-Game Species Program, an arm of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections, Division of Land Use Regulation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Slide thirty-four. I, the E R I talks about wetlands at a premium in Princeton. Think about this, I hope all of you in the room recognize it, five percent or less of the land cover in Princeton is wetlands. So, it's easy to conclude that the landwin wetlands deserve the highest protection that they could possibly get under the inferences in the E R I. Again, page sixty-two may have to be updated as well, maybe all these pages are off, but they are part of the language in the E R I, which we will correct to the two thousand and ten version prior to converting to a PDF for your perusal. So, here's the map, and you see landwins, I don't know if I depicted it with a bubble, but landwin is up in this area here. And here's a direct picture from the, the road of leaf out of skunk cabbage, wetlands associated with landwin. You see that surface water and those perched geologic environments that create really nice specialized wetland habitats. Most of you, I'm sure, know that, except for rainforests, wetlands are the areas of highest biodiversity on planet Earth. And a couple snippets of species that I saw during my wetland excursions around landwin, blue-fronted dancer, a type of damselfly, and the common yellow-throat warbler, a species, the name is common yellow-throat. It's actually hard to find, it's not a species that you see every day, but it's associated with these wetland systems. Very beautiful neotropical bird, again, one of the birds that are in decline worldwide.
Was that slide thirty-six?
Yes. This is slide thirty-seven.
I have one quick question, I'm sorry. When you say wetlands assoc, when you say wetlands associated with landwin, and we look hard to slide thirty-six, does that mean a wetland on the landwin site?
I mean that the bird itself is associated with wetlands.
Yes, and on the slide, it said wetlands associated with landwin. Does that mean that was a wetland on the landwin property?
That was a, a wetland that you could see in the next three, four weeks, just from Harrington Road. You'll see all the skunk cabbage up along, you know, in the vernal habitat.
So, that wetland is on the landwin site?
That was on the landwin site.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, you could see that from the developed Harrington Road or the undeveloped Harrington?
From the undeveloped side of, of the road. Notice that.
I'm sorry, I think there's some clarification. When you, I think what Mr. Cohen's asking, is that the paved part of Harrington?
It's the paper road.
Or the rural one, the paper one?
The paper road.
Okay, thank you.
You can walk into any of the wetlands on Harrington Road proper, Harrington Paper Road, and see that broad configuration of skunk cabbage in the lowest areas of the site. It's quite beautiful before leaf out. Makes for a nice image. Vernal ponds are considered to be exceptional value wetlands when certain species are using them as a primary breeding site in New Jersey. And the E R I addresses this by stating municipalities can provide additional protection for vernal pools by instituting restrictive zoning or negotiating conservation instruments on the land surrounding the vernal pools. I don't know if Princeton Township has ever taken advantage of that, but because vernal habitat is so, is such a rare and exceptional resource type of wetland, that would, in my estimation, be a, be a great idea. Here's the spring peeper just from the little finger off of Harrington Lane, almost across the street from the, from the church, a little bit closer to the vernal pond, but in those ruts, those tire ruts, right along the right-of-way, these guys are crossing the roads. I'm going to talk about this when we get to the vernal habitats, but spring peepers are quite common in the woodlands. Little tree frog, if you look at your thumbnail, that's the size of that, that critter right The Van Horn brook is an exceptional resource, as indicated on pages forty-six and forty-seven. Again, we may have to cross-reference the latest version. Where it states that headwaters are of particular importance because they tend to contain a high diversity of aquatic species, and their conditions affect the water quality found downstream. They drain only small parcels of land, usually no larger than one square mile. Because of this size, they are highly susceptible to impairment and human activities on land. That's directly from your environmental resource inventory. Now, I could tell you that the Van Horn brook starts just west, southwest of the landwin property. It emerges and informs, and then fingers into landwin site, and then leaves behind Montgomery Woods Townhome Complex. But, those, the area of woodlands that buffers the Van Horn brook, according to, not Blaine Rothhauser, but your E R I, should be areas that you assure don't get natural resource damaged.
What slide? It's not actually slide thirty, is it? Is this slide, slide thirty-eight?
Uh, probably.
There's a miss, there were, there may have been an error that.
Okay, so you'll correct that.
I noticed this originally before tonight, yeah. It may not be thirty-eight, there may be another thirty-eight, but we'll make sure it's referenced. But following Mr. Muller's statement, the reference to the headwaters quotation from the E R I at the present time is marked slide thirty. That may, that number may change in the final exhibit.
We'll make sure that the PDF has all those specific slide corrections. So, here's the Van Horn brook, looking from Porth Farm Road, I believe, you know, and you could clearly see that it's buffered by woodlands on either side. Landwin is greenway connected to two of your most important and precious preserves in the township. Autumn Hill Preserve and the Harrington Arbor Redham and Woods Preserve. The landwin property is in the oval, and let me go back and show you, just let you consume that a little better, that you see Autumn Hill and Harrington Woods. In an upcoming slide, we show the, how they're literally greenway connected to the landwin forest, that they're not fragmented a hundred percent by Harrington Lane. So, your other document, living and breathing as it is, is your master plan, and on page ten, and I hope I got the right addition correct here, and I'm assuming I'm back on track with slide forty. The, the goals specifically advise the municipality to look at open spaces as linkages, to look for sites that have steep slopes and floodplains, historic and cultural resources on site. And it directs the municipalities to preserve these wherever possible, the scenic quality of, of Princeton Gateways, and where possible, take steps to enhance and protect those greenways, of which clearly the landwin property is, as we reference Princeton Ridge itself. Here's Bruce during our November walk, looking into the area that is going to be the eastern part of the cluster. It's about a hundred by a hundred square feet of view where the major trees are, including the one he's leaning on, mostly Norway spruce with diameter of breast heights of eight to thirty-eight. But I counted twenty-five trees. How many trees in the twenty-six point one acre removal? Well, Ron Farr tried to help me get to that answer using aerial photography coverages, and we're approximating between a thousand and three thousand. It's very difficult unless you have a tree survey, but the, the point is, that's a lot of biomass that's going to be removed. And by the way, just to, to put a finer point on it, you can clear twenty-six point one acres in one day with this machine. You can, you could drive by Harrington Road in the morning and come home at night, and there'll be a big hole in the, in the ground. And when I say a hole, it's going to affect the soil down to ten, twelve inches. So, that's all that biomass. The point I'm trying to make is, you have all those trees, we don't know the number because they didn't do the, the, the proper analysis to even give you how many trees, as though trees aren't important, you know, why, we're just clearing it, we're saving the rest, so what does it matter how many trees? We go, well, I'll tell you why it matters. That much biomass in all those trees doesn't stop in the organic cellulose of the tree. It's connected and tethered to all the other life, much of it, I tried to give you a snippet of at the beginning of this, is tethered to that biomass, the bugs, the birds, the herptiles on the ground, the mammals on the ground, right? That's gone within a, a blink of a day. By the time you go to work and by the time you get home, that biomass leaves the building, exits stage left, never to return, and its functions and values will never again be seen on planet Earth. Again, we're approximating a thousand to three thousand trees. Is it more? I don't know. It's not going to be much less, according to our analysis of the trees. So, is this really a complicated equation, ten B, one eighty-nine, one? Landwin property designated as environmentally critical land, you're going to remove all that biomass in a nanosecond of geologic time, and then directly eliminate its functions and values of this open space, and that will compromise what remains through secondary and tertiary impacts, which segues me into the last part of our, our program here, my surveys of what I actually saw during two thousand and nineteen, and then the impacts that will occur from the removal of that much land. The master plan designates the section as an environmentally sensitive area, we've mentioned that, so one could logically infer from this designation that if you intentionally influence thirty acres of environmentally sensitive land through its direct obliteration, and I stop here and I say to you, I'm not using hyperbolic language when I say obliteration, that's what you're going to do. You're going to obliterate the, the resource in a day to accommodate a residential cluster of homes, that this activity will, that this activity, from an ecologist's standpoint, will have an unreasonable adverse impact upon the area in which it is proposed to be established. Now, when I say impact, I'm talking from an ecologist's standpoint, ecological impacts, which, for the rest of my time, I will attest are numerous and irreversible. So, my surveys occurred around the periphery of the site. I also did surveys concomitant to the times I was out there in Autumn Hill and Harrington Woods, so that I had proxies for which to see what was dynamically going on at the time during my surveys. I wanted to be able to compare and contrast, which I will do. A lot of my time was spent along that paper road because it had such great accessibility to the interior. This is basically the interior section of the landwin property. What you see, obviously, is the imprint of the disturbances that are slated to occur through the site plan.
This is slide forty-five for the record.
So, here, you see the greenway connections between the two preserves that the E R I is so blatantly trying to, to get into the mindset of the, the board to preserve because of this genetic and cross, this cross-referencing of biodiversity. So, my surveys included flora, avian, herp tile, reptiles and amphibians, in totality, mammals, mostly mammals were sightings. It's very hard, I did not put traps out, I didn't put game cameras out, they were, if I saw scat, if I saw, you know, prints in the landscape, I identified what I saw. Insects of significance, anything I saw during my walks, even if I was there mainly for birds, which I was one particular day in June, if I saw a plant blooming, I, I made note of it, if I saw a different tree, I made note of it, if I saw a different insect, I made note of it. I also did a nocturnal moth survey using a high-intensity, full-spectrum, thousand-watt metal halide light. Talk about that in a second. My avian surveys were three seasons, they were spring, summer, and fall. How many people recognize this bird? I call it the gra, the, the lawn slug because it's a woodpecker that actually feeds on grubs. It's a great species to promote because it's, it's eating, you know, june beetles and grubs on your lawn. It zippers like a, a sewing machine on your front yard, and it's absolutely stunning. It's our most stunning woodpecker. Insects of significance, anything I saw during my walks, even if I was there mainly for birds, which I was one particular day in June, if I saw a plant blooming, I, I made note of it. If I saw a different tree, I made note of it. If I saw a different insect, I made note of it. I also did a nocturnal moth survey using a high-intensity full-spectrum 1,000-watt metal halide light. Talk about that in a second. My avian surveys were three seasons. They were spring, summer, and fall. How many people recognize this bird? I call it the, the Lawn Slug because it's a woodpecker that actually feeds on grubs. It's a great species to promote because it's, it's eating, you know, June beetles and grubs on your lawn. It zippers like a la sewing machine on your front yard, and it's absolutely stunning. It's our most stunning woodpecker. It's a woodpecker. So it's a cavity nesting bird, and it's very com, it's very common and part of the survey that, that we, we perform. This is a hairy woodpecker, not a downy. You can tell by the, the beak size. Eating poison ivy berries, which by the way, are incredibly good natural food source. I know everybody wants it off their property and get an herbicide to crap out of it, get rid of it. But if you're a songbird, this is the most nutritious thing you could have in your forest is poison ivy, because they co-evolved to allow the bird species, especially the neotropical birds, that need a good dash of, of macronutrients to get down to South America, the neotropical birds. They need fatty nutrient-dense sources. Poison ivy gives it to them. The non-native species give them nothing. Multiflora rose, Oriental Bittersweet, Japanese Barberry. This is biologic pollution, as opposed to poison ivy, which supports natal systems. Little, little side note there to keep you guys awake, I hope. So the result of a two-day avian survey, one on Herentown Arboretum, so I could compare and contrast it with the Landwin property in June, early June, kind of a peak nesting period. That's why I, I, I made this document, because I wanted to see what are the most likely nesting birds. I had, I think, 64 total species during the three seasons, but during this day, I had 36 birds on Landwin from around the periphery, various sites. In the Herentown Arboretum, I pretty much stayed the whole time in one spot, at the Arboretum parking area. So that's probably the difference in the count. You see 28 here and 36 here. But you could see in totality, there's a robust avian ecology at, within this Greenway-connected series of, of lands. Total species, as I mentioned, were 68. 28 assumed breeding, one threatened, the red-shouldered hawk. I saw fly from Montgomery Woods into the Landwin property. Three special concern birds, two neotropical, one raptor. The Cooper Hawk is the, is the special concern raptor. The neotropical warblers are the very in-the-hoodet warbler. But I wanted to show you this, I have other clients on Princeton Ridge where I do ecological surveys. This is a red-shouldered hawk. This is a state threatened bird. This is on Princeton Ridge. This is Princeton Ridge, and I've been talking to the endangered non-game species folks, they're very interested in my work because they, they're like Blaine, what's with the ridge? You're getting all these sightings of red-shouldered hawk. I said, they're there. The forest has, has evolved and has succeeded to more mature forest, which is providing enough interior cover to allow this species to promote its breeding, part of its life history, and keep away from its arch enemy, which is the great horned owl. So, in red-tailed hawk for that matter, those two species keep these guys more to the interior of forests. So interior forests, any area that you can buffer by other forests are gonna make the interior more special, are gonna allow these rarer species to do their business and, and be present. And the red-shouldered hawk is something I want to bring to your attention that follows that, that pre-script. It's not a red-tailed hawk. These are very common Landwin all over the place. You can't walk out of your house without looking up in the sky and seeing a red-tailed hawk if you're at all cognizant of being alive. Very, very common species, and obviously, this particular image depicts that diagnostic feature. In 12 surveys, and really, it's, it's six because herbiles kinda confine themselves to late spring and summer to be prevalent enough to count them. And the, the wood turtle that you see here is the threatened species that's on the Landwin site. I did not see it. This is from two reports from 2019 that are being subject to endangered species non-game review. Every, every wood turtle sighting, I, I've worked with this species dozens of times with state biologists. I know this species probably better than any threatened species because I've done so much work. And I did not find a wood turtle on site, but apparently, there are two records that are being authenticated by non-game species biologists now. It takes up to a year and are over for the species to get into the biotic system where land use regulation then recognizes them when applications like this come to the forefront. I had told the endangered species biologists that there is a cluster division application out, and hopefully, they can look at this in a more timely fashion and authenticate it. Like I said, I've never seen a report come in that the state didn't authenticate, because most of the reports come in from endangered species biologists like myself who are qualified to make those determinations. The second species of rarity would be the box turtle, which I found on Herentown Lane, Herentown Road in the paper, on the paper road. Gonna have a picture of that here. This is the actual picture. And you could see it's clearly a box turtle. Unfortunately, this guy wouldn't let me photograph him with his head out. I stayed there forever. He just stayed inside his shell. It was a male. I flipped him over, that's why he's not putting his head out, because once I picked him up, he said, no way, buddy. I'm not, not giving you the time of day. It was a male because it's plastron, the bottom of the shell is concave. You could sex them that way. Think of turtles trying to do, do the dirty, and they have to be configured in a certain way to get that done. So this was clearly a male turtle. Now, now the box turtle, and it's important, I'm not diverting to keep you here any longer than you have to be, believe it or not, but box turtles have a home range of only a couple of acres, okay? Now that's important to know. So if, I only saw one male through my, all my surveys. If there's a breeding pair here, any perturbation in the impacts to the local environment could usher in the local extinction of, of box turtle. Box turtle are, are special concern, but I'm part of an IDELFI panel that's looking into north of Mercer County, putting this on the threatened list, it should be, because we've developed and parceled and fragmented so much of the northern part of our state that these guys get hammered by fragmentation, cars crossing in areas where a two-acre box turtle population exists. Kids, when you have put a development in, what's the first thing the kids do? They go out in the woods and, oh, I see a box turtle. Bring it home? Never to breed again. They don't know what to feed it, usually it dies. This, these are real impacts to this species. I'm not making that up for effect. This is what, this is why, in a blink of an eye, these guys were here 65 million years ago, under the weighty feet of dinosaur, and in a nanosecond of time, I guarantee, wood turtles and box turtles will not be here in 100 years. No way. We've done too much fragmentary damage. We have too many ancillary behaviors that are gonna usher in the demise of these things. See the scoots that are the individual cells? You can count the annuli, which are a way of determining how old it is. Of course, when they get too old, they wear down and you can't, you can't do it anymore. But this guy's about 20, 21 years old. So it can breed for another 30, 40 years, but with the secondary and tertiary impacts of fragmentation, which I'm gonna get into, they, they probably won't make it. So here are the areas where the two reports were...
Sorry, hang on a second. That would have been, can you go back to, please?
This is slide 55. I guess the one before was 54.
Can you go back one more so we can confirm that? Yeah, so the turtle image of the box turtle was 54. I'm sorry, if it wasn't clear, slide 54 was the box turtle.
This is 55. So here you see all of the sightings. I know because I got the sighting locations from the endangered species biologists. Now, I don't know, you know, they were told to me over the phone. I know one was on the Van Horn Brook behind the Assistant Living, and one was behind Herentown Lane. My sighting was on Herentown Paper Road. Here's your vernal pond for reference. Let's talk about vernal ponds.
This is now slide...
Slide 56. So if you went two nights ago, March 3, to the fire hydrant on Herentown Road across from the church, you would have witnessed what is one of the most spectacular events in New Jersey natural history, and that is the emergence of vernal species that it's like the earth gives birth to frogs, and then they find, chemically finding their way from all over, not just from across the street, but from an area up to a quarter mile if it's a wood frog. Each species has its own dispersal distances, but a quarter mile is pretty much the home ranges of these guys. And they chemically sense where their natal ponds are. And they, during the first warm event in late winter, early spring, which is where we are now, temperatures above 45 with a good heavy soaking rain, you better get out on the street and, and check this out because it'll blow your, it'll blow your mind, okay? I do crossings all over the state. I missed one on Tues, on, what was it, Tuesday, because I wanted to be here to document what was crossing Herentown Lane. Really, it's only a quarter of a mile. Here's a, here's another vernal pond that the, the state never documented.
I'm sorry, you said Herentown Lane, or did you mean...
Herentown Road.
Thank you.
Now, there was a discussion, I think it was July 8, July 18, they were talking, you guys were talking about vernal ponds, and whoever was the applicant's agent was saying, oh, you know, a couple vernal ponds. Didn't mention that there's a vernal habitat map based on these isoplasts that determine where the, the animals dispersed to. These are not people from DEP going out on site and checking out where the frogs are. That doesn't happen. This is just their algorithms that they use for the different species to create this map, and it creates this vernal habitat layer, which is this lighter blue, so that almost the entire site is vernal habitat. And I agree with that because if you walked through this forest during the middle of the, of August, you're likely to find an American toad on the other side of the ridge, okay? Where's he breeding? He's breeding in these, in these ponds. That's where he breeds. State doesn't know where every pond is. They did an atlas survey in the late 90s. I was part of it, and the Endangered Nongame Species Program. And people like myself went out all through the state and provided point sources of where these ponds are. So obviously, somebody drove down Herentown Lane, saw the, heard the toad, the frog singing, and called it in, and now it's on a map, okay? You think anybody from the Landwin family went, called the state up and said, I got two vernal ponds on my property? That never happened. How do you think they got mapped? The state biologists didn't map them. They get mapping data from citizen scientists, environmental consultants, and the like. So, you know, lo and behold, I'm on the side of the road, and I could hear frogs calling from the left side of the, the, the paper, the paper road into the, into the complex. So there's gotta be another vernal pond. Now, I know this to be true because during the November walkthrough, we walked, I intentionally walked in that area and saw dried depressional areas. Now Bruce asked the applicant, what's a vernal pond? He hadn't really, frogs live there. I think that's what, I mean, go back in the transcript, you gotta see this stuff. This is what you're supposed to make decisions on. Guys like this telling you that this is where frogs live, okay, that's good, but, but what about the life history of these vernal pond species? What, what's important about them that I, as a planning board member, need to know when we're determining impacts? Well, one, big one takeaway is that they disperse throughout the land. They're not just here on March 3 when it rains. Yes, they are en masse. Many of them get spewed crossing over Herentown Road, and many will get spewed when that road's there, leading into the complex. 30 townhomes, two cars per household, times two ingresses and egress, that's 60 passes on average a day on that road. March 3 to the beginning, the middle of March, how many frogs do you think will get spewed going in and out of that? And, and not to mention the additional traffic on that. That's pretty much an impact to an environmentally sensitive area, not Blaine Rothhauser saying it, the Environmental Resource Inventory says it. There's more habitats than what is mapped here. That was the mind-boggling thing that you heard. Oh, well, this is all I gotta give you because that's what the state says, as though it's in a vacuum. It's, it's, it's infuriating to an ecologist who's spent his life trying to protect resources to see how we actually don't protect resources. Call anybody in the Endangered Nongame Species Program tomorrow, please, and ask them if they're understaffed. They can't possibly go out and determine where every little endangered critter is in the state. Doesn't happen. That's why you need citizen scientists to tell you that I found a wood turtle in my backyard. By the way, how many people that even have knowledge of what endangered species look like have the wherewithal to report them? Not too many. They might know that it's a, I saw a red-shouldered hawk, but, okay, I go, I gotta go get my kids to, to school. I'm not gonna stop and write a report. Where would I even do that? So all the reporting of, of sensitive species are woefully incomplete, woefully incomplete, disgustingly incomplete. We don't even know what we're losing as we're losing it in real time. And then, planning boards with the best intentions hear this one side of an equation and forego all the reality that's, that's happening here. So back on track, you got a site with vernal habitat, your ERI says these are sensitive sites, and...
One question, please. The, if you can go back before that circle. The blue crosshatching they referred to, the light blue that prevails on this map, what is the source of that map?
Right here, this is, this is from this mapping layer source. I can't read it, and it's all called out as vernal habitat, and I, I think we, we know that it's from Landscape Version 3.3's Species Occurrence Area Map.
The Landscape Map is a DEP map.
Is a DEP map. And that's what I think this company is referencing.
We'll get a, a clear version of the legend at another time.
It's, this is from the ERI, this map. Uh, no, it's from, I believe we got it from the consultant's source that put this up.
Well, this, this map is a composite of some things, but I was referring to the portion that is the vernal, that is the blue crosshatching.
That is a layer of, of what the state depicts as vernal habitat.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I circled it, to emphasize it. That's why I circled it, to emphasize it. Here's Ron Esilvatica, Esilvatica meaning woodland. It is a true woodland species, beautiful, gorgeous little thing. You want to, drive by Herentown Road tomorrow, please, every one of you. Pull over safely in the church, walk across, and you guys are allowed on the site. Go to that pond and look at what's happening. I guarantee you, it'll change your perspective on everything. You're witnessing, how many, I'm sure most of you watch nature documentaries. This is truly a nature documentary that you can see in real time here in New Jersey. Watching these guys do what they do during this period is fascinating, how they wrestle with other males, how they hang out in the corner and wait for a female to come out, how they call, how some males don't call and others do call. The vernal ponds fill up in spring, okay, and are dry by summer. This particular pond gets muddy and has little surface water. As Lincoln says, if it rains hard in August, it's still going to fill. But this thing dries pretty good. And why is this such a valuable source of habitat for frogs? Because there's no predators in them. There's no fish, okay? So when they dry up, so they can breed quickly. They're explosive breeders. Most of the frogs came in the other night. You missed that event. I saw it in real time. But the event's over in about a week. The males and females disperse. You never know what happened until... Slide, oh, this is the other night I took this, right in a rut on the side of the road. I did not trespass. I saw this right in a rut. There were many, every rut had wood frogs in it, okay? But this is the most spectacular thing.
This is slide 58.
This is in a little finger that comes off this major vernal pond. So I can only imagine what the vernal pond looks like when it's full of tadpoles. I've done vernal pond surveys all over the place, and I've seen wood frogs. I've never seen more wood frog larvae than I have on this site. And I'm sure most of you say, "Ah, come on, he's just saying that for effect." No, you could have almost walked across this pond on the backs of tadpoles. It was amazing. It was astonishing, okay? It was absolutely astonishing. This is the resource that I am positive will get impacted as the site design is in play. So here's a vernal pond. I took this legally during that November. Spectacular. It's just, it's deep. It's got southerly exposed areas to bake eggs because the frogs want their eggs cooked quickly so that the larvae emerge quickly and they fulfill their life history quickly. That's the whole gig with vernal ponds, is you need to breed quick, get the hell out of Dodge quick, go back to your everyday living. But these are essential ingredients. By the way, we've lost over 50% of these because before, I think it was 1999, when DEP finally put a little bit of protection into the Fresh Water Wetland Protection Act rules to protect this special resource, they were disappearing before our eyes because most people in the summer saw them as little dried depressions, isolated, and said, "Ah, nothing to see here." But thank God, we've determined how special they truly are.
This, on slide 59, where does this pond physically appear?
This is right on the side of Herentown Road, across the street from the church, between the church and the fire hydrant.
Now, this will be...
20 feet off the road.
Now, this is the paved part of Herentown?
Yes.
So this is below where the cluster will be?
Yes.
Right under, that's the pond under the cluster on the map?
I wish this thing would, I wish this would show, and it doesn't show the pointer. But where the D is, is looking, looking north of the D is where the cluster's going to be.
Could you go back, please, to the composite chart 56 and show us where that pond is on 56? I'm sorry, the record may not hear me. Can you go back to 56?
There it is.
And show us where that pond is on 56?
There it is.
For the record, the witnesses used the arrow on the pond to the left side in the right-hand corner.
Now, I put this little circle here because it's the finger of vernal habitat here. And obviously, this...
You said vernal habitat?
Vernal pond.
Thank you.
Finger of vernal pond. This should be just north of the road proper, obviously. But that's where the pond is. Then there's other ponds here that are not recognized by the state.
And that's a, that's a third pond further to the left that you've put on the map?
Yeah, I suggest that the applicant's agent delineate the other ponds and send those reports into the state as a responsibility to the human race.
So let's clarify then, Ms. Rothhauser. On slide 56, you now have on the bottom portion in the right-hand corner, three blue circles. One to the far right is what you call the finger of the vernal pond.
These are fingers of vernal pond, connected to this as well.
The next one to the left is the one you said reflected on the subsequent slide, the photograph.
Yes.
And finally, you've inserted further to the left, a third blue circle, which was not on the state map, but which you identified. Is that correct?
Yes.
Would you please tell the board how you identified that as vernal pond in your understanding, estimation?
Well, during our November walk, I could see there's depressional areas. And on the other night, on March 3rd, I could hear wood frogs calling from that sector, from the road.
When you saw it as a depressional area, what was the vegetation status in that depressional area?
It had some cover. I didn't record it during our walk, but it had some vegetative cover. But it was clearly depressional because you could see the dried, stained leaves in that depression.
Thank you. For the record, then, the pond depicted on slide 59 was the pond to the left of the far-right pond on slide 56 on the bottom.
Now, it's been a dry winter, as you all probably know, but enough rain to make it appear from my vantage point, I couldn't measure the depth. I wish we could do depth studies of these ponds over a course of a decade to truly understand their hydrodynamics because that's going to play significantly into the de-watering of the vernal habitat, as testified by Lincoln Hollister just moments ago. But anyway, other species that I've heard calling from the ponds are green frogs, American toad, this is wood frog, it's mislabeled, I'll relabel that, pickral frog, but there's spring peepers also that are breeding in that pond. And that was slide 60. In slide 61, on April 30th, 2019, to show you how the nexus works within these systems, you see here a green heron. Now, I did not take this picture on the pond. I saw the green heron leave the pond from the road with a frog of some kind in its beak. Now, this is a depiction of that action.
You took this photograph off that site after you observed it?
That's what I just mentioned.
Thank you.
No, I took, this is not the picture of the little green heron from the site. This is a depiction of a heron with a frog, but that's what I noticed the day of April 30th, a green heron flying out with a frog in its beak. I didn't have anything on me other than my eyes to see this happening. But the point is, is that the ponds are part of the food nexus in the area, you know? They're not in a vacuum. Species know where they are. You saw the red-shouldered hawk on the tree eating a spotted salamander from a vernal pond along Princeton Ridge in another area. They become active feeding areas. The animals know where these ponds are. Not all of the frogs live to tell the story. Now, Stephen Hiltner is a naturalist that understands Herentown Woods very well. He's told me that spotted salamanders breed in those ponds just a couple hundred meters away on the other side of Herentown Road. So slide 62 shows a spotted salamander crossing a road in Alamoche in Waterloo Village. But the point of this is, I did not see spotted salamander or document on the site, but we are highly suspicious. I would love to be able to get to the pond and have permission to dip net within that pond in the next three weeks to determine presence/absence of this very important salamander. 7:45, March 3rd, right along this little 1/10th of a mile stretch. Close your eyes if you can't handle it, okay? But this, you need to see the impact on a road that's not overly busy, but I counted 26, what I call DORs, dead-on-the-road wood frogs, just the other night, in just a couple of hours, from 6 o'clock till 9 o'clock at night, there were wood frogs spewed all over the place on this 1/10th of a mile road.
This is slide 64.
Yeah, could I...
You can see the eggs in this female that have squished out of her. But there were over 25 of these that I recorded.
How many more slides do you have?
Slide 64?
He has approximately 25.
25 more?
Dead on the road in a few hours.
We won't, well, I mean, he probably would finish just at 11:00. I'm going to have supplemental questions for him, so if the board wants to break at this point, the spewed frog might be the breaking point.
This is the point that you had asked us about, sorry.
Right. I'm feeling a little better because I'm not cross-examining, so I'm just sitting here. So if the board wants to continue, it's okay with me.
Want to continue? No.
Okay. I had suggested breaking at this time because I wasn't feeling well. I mean, I could go on, but I'm fine to break now at this stage.
How many of you want to just go on?
Well, if, if this expert is not going to, has got 25 more slides, and then Bruce is not likely to complete his cross tonight, and you're going to... I'm sorry, yes, you're questioning, I apologize.
That's all right.
So you'll be coming back anyway, right?
We will.
Oh, yes.
I have 115 total slides.
Feeling a little slayed myself.
115, I'm sorry.
Not as bad as that frog, but getting there.
It was more than I thought. I thought it was a total of 90. It's 100. So I would suggest we're not going to finish tonight at all.
I think it's time to break if he's got 115 slides.
Right. Okay, we have...
I had suggested this time, knowing this, and it's probably a good idea.
Okay, we have an opening on Thursday, April 2nd, and we would need an extension through April 3rd.
Wanda, we can't quite hear.
Thursday, April 2nd, and we would need an extension through April 3rd. Is that okay?
Granted, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Bruce?
I'm sorry, I'm just checking if... Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Can I just check with me two experts who I know need to come that week as well? I just want to check on the availability of two other experts in the room on April 2nd.
Yes, go ahead.
You're okay for second?
April 2nd? I have to look at mine, but I need you somehow.
April 2nd is good.
All right, then. Shall we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. In favor?
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry?
I moved it, and Owen O'Donnell seconded. Thank you. Thank you.